It is Tuesday, April 26 and it is approximately 12:01 PM. And I, this is the building committee meeting. I'm gonna call Roca. The president, Coach Lupita Cepeda.
Present.
Judge Martínez. Jorge J D Delgado, present. Okay, we do have a committee present. Item number three, Dr. De Hidena.
Yes, Dr. De Hidena, for the record, I will have Mr. Cesar Vela and Mr. Vice present on the Gmax that we got from Mr. Line Decker for the record in Gonzales Automotive Technology Center Diesel Shop Expansion.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, board members. Cesar Vela, VP of Finance, for the record. The next item is requesting approval for the guaranteed maximum price as presented by Line Decker Construction for the Raquel Gonzales Automotive Technology Center Diesel Shop Expansion Project. The Gmax is being presented by Line Decker is $5,466,679.53. Originally, we had a budget of 4.3 million for this project. We are proposing to allocate an additional 1.1, almost 1.2 million, a million 166,678.53 from the amount that has been allocated for furniture and equipment out of Phase Three to be able to fully fund the project. Originally, this project had come, projected Gmax of 6,570,000. Now, we went, we asked both the architect and Line Decker Construction to revisit the project and we have value engineered a portion of that project. I'm not sure, can you see the screens? We have the, the project as being proposed. You can see there, we have a new section that is being added to the Raquel Gonzales Building. And this consists of approximately six base for the diesel technology classes or labs. In this particular area here, we're also adding locker rooms and restrooms. And also, we're also expanding the collision labs, the auto collision labs, approximately 5,284 square feet. And we're also enclosing the welding lab area and adding a storage area for the welding portion of that building. Now, originally, as I mentioned, the, the plan called for a quick service bay area. And it was approximately five, 4,144 square feet. It included, it included three bay areas. This area is being removed in order to bring the cost down to the 5.4 million that is being proposed. In addition to that, we are protecting some additional work here and this will be an open space. And, and what we're doing is we're just enclosing this area to be used by the automotive area as a storage space.
Mr. Vela, the area that you're, that you're removing, is, is it an area that is needed?
We asked that question out of, out of the program and it was more of a wish. They expressed that they needed more the expansion of the lab. And therefore, our focus was making sure that they got the additional bay areas for their diesel and auto collision labs. Again, this was a nice feature to have, but it was not, at this point right now, they can wait on that one item. So that is why, the reason that we, we went ahead and, and removed it from the project.
And it'll, you'll be able to, to, to leave it as maybe future, you know, ready for like the future, am I correct?
Yes, that's correct. This, this area here would be still available for that future expansion. And I believe, we've had some discussions, again, again, it's a nice, it would have been a nice addition to the facility, but it is not needed at this, at this time. Again, their, their concern was getting those additional ways so that they can expand their lab and offer. So they're getting this additional six space here for the diesel shop as well as expanding the auto collision and welding.
Chair recognizes VP that.
Mr. Vela, how much money is available in the furniture and equipment budget for the Masters or for Phase Three?
Yes, we currently have 2,903,122. So, once we allocate the additional funds that are needed for this project, we will be left with a million 736,443 dollars for furniture and equipment, which right now, we're currently working at the south campus on identifying audiovisual equipment needs and furniture needs for that campus.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Vela? Is that it?
No, that's it.
No question, any comments, Mr. Vice? No?
For the record, construction manager. I just did want to mention that when we moved the quick lane facility, we took it off the project. We did carry one service pit to the expansion to the diesel shop. So we will carry one pit over so they can still teach that portion of the courses. So we had two in the original building. We took the building out, or we took, we moved the pit over to, to one of the, the buildings itself.
Okay, now, after this, I'm believing it's on Thursday's meeting to approve this. So then, how fast are we gonna be moving on this? I know that, you know, when we, when we were out there with the check, you know, we need it and we need it pretty fast. So how fast are we gonna be moving on this to get it running?
Yeah, there's been some, just recently this morning, some discussion with Chief Frank, one of the instructors on, and I'm actually scheduled to meet with him this afternoon to go ahead and start talking about relocating some of the, the parts and different equipment that they do have in the open space that needs to be off of the, off of the area. But the contractor, soon as we get approved, the contractor will immediately be waiting for the contract. And, and then immediately when they get that, they go off of their bonds, which is pretty quick. And so I, I would imagine that probably, probably under maybe a month and then we go ahead and take off and commence work on site.
What's, what's the time span for the project?
I have not gotten an official timeframe, but I would manage to probably estimate probably nine months to, to a year. Would probably be a timeframe comfortable to, to get done.
Any questions? Sure. Item number four.
Dr. De Hidena, for the record, we'll just let Mr. Vela say for the remainder of the agenda.
This next item is the approval of a contract for the parking lot resurfacing and repairs at the Fort Macintosh Campus. We issued out a request for competitive seal proposals back in March 10th. We did receive the three proposals. One of them unfortunately was not compliant. We did get two that complied with all the requirements. And that was American Contracting and Roofing and Midas Contractors LLC. The proposals were evaluated by an internal committee based on criteria that is listed on the request for proposals on page 14 and it should be included in your packet. The items that were reviewed or were looked at were the price, the experience and reputation of the contractor, safety record, personnel and the financial capability of the contractor. Also, the timeframe for completing the project. Based on that criteria, American Contracting and Roofing received 293.5 points. Midas Contractors received 252 points. The contract amount for the winning bid is 735,000 for the work that will be done here at the Fort Macintosh Campus. The scope of work is detailed also on the request for proposal on pages two through four. And the work includes repairing, seeing and painting the asphalt. We have identified seven parking lots that will be, will need to be completely resurfaced. Also, repairs of potholes, seal coating and striping and painting the parking lots. Also, one of the items that is covered under this contract is also making sure that there is proper water drainage of the parking lots. So again, all that will be reviewed as part of the scope of work for this project.
Chair recognizes VP that.
Mr. Vela, a quick question, out of the four individuals or four entities that applied, how many of them are local?
I believe all three that apply were locals.
Which one of the three were local?
No, all three of them.
All three?
Yes.
So American Contracting is local?
Yes, sir.
No, they're not, they're from the valley area. They're not local. According to my research, they're located in Brownsville.
They have an address listed here, 404, 4507 Saunders.
Yeah, I have a P O box in New York, it doesn't mean that I'm from New York. I'd like more information on American Contracting. Because if they're saying that they're local and they're not, I'd like more information on that. Also, my second question regards to this, with regards to the committee, why aren't these proposals being brought to the board?
Well, typically, we, we have internal committees and then the committee will make a recommendation to the board.
So we wouldn't, these presentations would never be brought to the board, just the recommendations?
For this type of projects, yes.
For all construction projects?
Not for all of them. Again, we, we had for the selection of the C Mar, being again, based on the contract amount. Those have been brought to the board.
Thank you. Correct me if I'm wrong, you said that there were three people, three companies in the bid?
Yes, sir.
But it's only showing two.
Yeah, one was not considered because it was not completed.
Who, I think you said there were four, am I correct? Three, and who was third one?
Now, I do have a W nine here and again, we'll, we'll look into it, but American Contracting, W nine and again, the listing, Royal Texas. As, as their.
Their address.
Ms. Royster, Ms. Royster, if you can go to the podium and just share so that the public knows what you're distributing.
Good afternoon, Mari Royster, purchasing director, for the record. So I shared with you the documentation that the committee put together, the pricing so that you have it available as well. And those that attended the proposal conference and we anticipated proposals from.
So there one was quantum, you said? The, the person that got disqualified?
Yes.
And they're local? So, yeah. Just a real quick question, did we, on, on the repaving, I know we've had the question of the main street that, are we gonna do work on, on that street?
On that one, I'll defer to Mr. Cepeda.
Yeah, I, I have spoken to Mr. Alisa Segarra about that we will be working on the street that is deemed a Laredo Street. Comes in and goes out to the neighborhood. And she said that what, what we decided is once we get the contractor in place, we're gonna have him give us a quote for that section, what, what needs to be done for that section. And then I, I've spoken to her a couple of times and she said we'll need the pitch in, hopefully. That's, that's the way we're gonna handle that.
And she, she has brought it up to city management office as a, as a possibility of partnering up with, with us?
Yes, yes. I spoke to her on the phone and then I spoke to her in person. And I reminded her that we had talked about that we were about to assign the contractor that's gonna do the, the work. And so she's, well, let's just estimate what, what the work is needed to be done on this section of Laredo Street. And now, they're willing to, to work with us on that.
Okay, another question, I know that we're gonna, you know, do all Fort Macintosh. We're gonna be able to put speed, new speed bumps and everything on them or?
Yes, the, the, the scope of work identifies the speed bumps, the curbs, potholes and potholes. We're not just gonna pour asphalt on them. The, 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 then find that they, they cut, saw cut in a square. Then they go down and if it doesn't have the, the proper gravel or footing, they need to replace that, curbs that need to be fixed and the proper paint for the striping as well. And, and bumps.
Yeah.
The speed bumps.
And this is just for Fort Macintosh, when are we gonna be looking at the possibility of the, of the south camp? Even though I know that one's probably gonna have to be in, in phases because of construction, but have we looked at the south camp?
Yeah, we actually kind of have a sort of a scoping number on that. But we, we decided to wait till they finish the truck pad and all the construction that's going on, utilizing some areas to store materials, you know, and all that. So we decided after all that is done, we're gonna do a proper scope of work in all the areas that need to be. As I pointed out, here, well, we identified seven areas that really need complete paving. Then there's another six that parking lots that are not, don't have a heavy use that we may just seal coat them. And, but there is a, there is a process that we're identifying, a worst case scenario is on, on some of the paving.
On the scope of work for the, for like the, the trucking area and everything like that, did we factor in the possibility of the, of the contractor to be able to repave that area? Or is it gonna be something left to us to do?
No, the contractor's responsibility to inspect all the, all the parking lots that we identified and to.
You're talking about, you're talking about a truck driving pad?
Yeah, is, is, is the repaving of, of, of that area gonna be left up to the contractor or is it gonna be left up to us?
No, that, that's not part of the scope of the truck driving pad, so it would be up to us. It would be part of the south campus. Now, if they have a staging area in one of our parking lots, then they have the responsibility of making sure that they leave it as, as, as it was originally when they, when they took over.
And have we even asked to see if they would be able to do it maybe for, for maybe a better price, being that they're there already?
We haven't, yeah, we haven't gone out yet for proposals on, on the south campus yet.
Talking about the contractor that's doing the, the truck. If they would be able to do it.
Oh, no, we haven't, we haven't had those discussions yet.
I'm just, I'm just asking to see if we would get a better price being that they're there already.
Yeah, the new one's concrete, but you're talking about the old parking lot that was being used by the truck driving program, right? Yeah, no, we haven't had those discussions yet.
I don't know, maybe it's a good question to ask, see how much we charge this compared to being that, I know it took us a long time to find contractors to actually do the paving, see if maybe the possibility of them actually doing it, if they're there already. Even though I know it'll probably, you know, come up with a cost, but maybe they'll be able to do it, right? If they're there already.
Yeah, like Homer mentioned, they're there, but it's, there's, the, the new pad is all concrete. So they would still have to bring in the, the asphalt subcontractor.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Vela. Item number five.
Yes, so this next item is again, another contract for the building P24 renovations. This is currently the building that will be leased out to the Department of Public Safety. The contract amount is for 227,333 for CertuCh construction. Again, we did go out for a request for proposals for this project. The proposals went out on February 24th. We did receive again, three proposals. Again, one was not compliant. The proposals were evaluated based on the criteria listed on the request for proposals by our internal committee. CertuCh construction received 298 points. Midas Contractors received 221 points. The contract amount again is 227,333. And I do have some images here of the work that will be done. Is that, do I need to enlarge it or is that good enough? Okay, so part of the work or the scope of work calls for setting some data drops in this building, P24, and some security cameras. Those are noted by, by the dot, red dots for the data drops, the blues are the camera locations. Also, the scope of work calls for parking lots, setting an automatic gate at one of our parking lots that will be utilized by the officers. Also, setting up all the data, data drops for the computers that will be housed in this building. I believe they have a total of 37 stations for this building. Also, the scope of work calls for the addition of a restroom and that I believe is in this area right here on the corner. And also, some work in the basement. And that calls for the addition of an MDF room in the basement as well as a cage that will be utilized for their evidence, securing their evidence. Again, the contract amount is for 227,000. DPS will be reimbursing the college 218,790. There is a difference of 8,543, which will be covered by the college's repair and alteration account.
Any questions?
The money that's coming from DPS, is that in the form of a grant or how did we get those funds?
No, it's an, it's a schedule, it's part of the appropriation.
Okay.
We do have an agreement with them and they will be paying it on a monthly basis. So as part of the rent payment, part of it will be for the construction reimbursement and in part for the operation of the rental of the facility.
So we're not getting that full amount in one check?
No, it's, it's being paid over, I believe it's over. Yeah, it's over 60 months.
Thank you. Item number six, Mr. Vela.
Yes, the next item is the approval of the guaranteed maximum price for building P14 project. And this is the building that will be leased out to the imaginary. We have received the guaranteed maximum price from Line Decker Construction. The guaranteed maximum price of 760,106 dollars. We currently have a budget of 650,000 for this project. 480,000 coming from facilities master plan phase two bond proceeds. And then the imaginary contribution of 170,000. We're also asking that the board approve the use of 110,106 from facilities master plan phase two savings to fully fund the project. Part of the increase of the cost is, as we had already mentioned, we do have to incorporate the additional costs for the bond, the insurance and the fee for the C Mar. And that totaled 38,700. In addition, there were some increases that were noted as part of the, the process and those were mostly like coming from construction materials, primarily the doors and the window costs. There was also a small adjustment to the elevator cost and that was about 17,000. So again, the additional funds that are needed are 110,106 for this project. Now, we do have 610,000 available from the facilities master plan phase two projects you available. So again, if approved, the 110,106 to fully fund the project would come from those 610,000.
Chair recognizes VP that.
Mr. Vela, the increase that's coming in, when you mentioned the bond, the insurance, C Mar, were all those items not considered in the beginning?
No, sir, this project was originally gonna, gonna be done in-house. So we had not, we had not factored in those costs.
So then should we go out for a bid or did this, this line of construction go through the committee to be selected? And we got, we ended up at this price?
Like I said, the process with the, the C Mar is that they'll go out for bids and then compile the, the, the results and present the Gmax.
And how many bids did we get for this particular project?
Not sure, we need to check with Line Decker to see what were the bids that they received. Again, this process is all handled by the C Mar. So our, our procurement office, it does not participate in the process, it's all handled by the C Mar.
I guess the question, Mr. that I was asking is, correct me if I'm wrong, is if we would go, if our procurement department would go out for bids, do you think we would have gotten a better price?
Well, right now, with, with what we're seeing, most likely not. Yeah, and again, one of the things is that they, one of the, we, we had this, like we mentioned, the 650,000 was the amount that we had to work with. So we, we, we had asked the C Mar to try to stay within that budget. Again, out of the 110,000, 38,700 was for those costs that we had not initially accounted for, which was the, the bond, the insurance and the, and their fee. And then, like I mentioned, we did see some increases in the construction materials from the time we had developed this, this budget.
And the timeframe for this one, if it, if it gets approved on Thursday?
We're looking at about nine to 12 months.
Nine to 12 months. Any questions? I guess that is it, motion to adjourn. So move on paper. Here we go, thank you. Thank you all for being here.
Thank you.